Good evening, everyone. I'm Jonathan Palmer, the Executive Director of the Halle Q. Brown Community Center. We administer the Martin Luther King Center, which is building mature in. So I'm welcome to this candidate for tonight. For those of you who are not familiar with Halle Q. Brown, we are an 84-year-old social service agency from outside of the house. And we have been the heart of the African-American community in St. Paul, the main gathering place. And so some of you may have remembered it from being across the highway. Well, when the highway came through in El Grande, that was changed to this. So we've been in this building since 1972. Great place to check out. We've got a lot of great programming for our food, shelter, and clothing closet, to our early learning center, which helps prepare kids for St. Paul Public Schools, because those are after-school programs. So we have one event that I will mention, our Halloween Party, Halloween Party on October 27th. Two or four, three open to the public, this fires up front. For this evening, I'm going to introduce Grant Abbott, who's going to take it from here, from Minnesota Achievement Gap Committee. So welcome to our center. Please enjoy yourself this evening. I am heading out only because I had a car accident and I need to go to the hospital. Otherwise, I would stay here to bring discussions going on. So without further ado, Grant.
Jonathan stuck around for us.
Thank you, Jonathan.
I want to thank Jonathan and the Halle Q. Brown Community Center for being one of the cosponsors of this, along with the St. Paul League of Women Voters. And for publicizing this all around, I hope as the evening goes on, we have more people that will join us, because this is an opportunity to hear from our candidates for school board on one issue and only one issue: the achievement gap. And this is a forum, it's not a debate. So we're asking only four questions of the candidates. And they will each have four minutes to respond. It's a lot more time than they usually get. And then after they go all the way through, if there's still some time, we'll allow those who wish to have one more minute to comment after they've heard everybody else, if you want to add something to what has been said. The four questions are: how do you understand the achievement gap? What is it? Why do we have it? Where does it come from? The second question is: what needs to be done to end the achievement gap? Third question is: how does the new St. Paul Public School racial equity policy affect the achieved efforts to end the achievement gap? And the last question is: what is the school board's role in ending the achievement gap in the St. Paul Public Schools? Those are the four questions. We're very fortunate in that the St. Paul Neighborhood Network, SPNN, our local access television station, is videotaping this, so that it will be broadcast later. You can go on their website, wwwspnn.org, to find out the schedule, to find out when it plays. They will also give to the Minnesota Achievement Gap Committee a DVD that we will put on our website, so people can access whatever they want. By the way, that is wwwmnachievementgap.org. My name is Grant Abbott. I am the co-convenor with former mayor and U.S. Representative Don Fraser of the Minnesota Achievement Gap Committee. It's a privilege to work with Don. He's here tonight, coming all the way over from Minneapolis, to be with us here as we talk about the school board in St. Paul. We also have been blessed to be cosponsoring this with the St. Paul League of Women Voters. And Sig Johnson is here, we're old friends. And the League of Women Voters, as you know, does... she's holding up the timing thing, so that everybody will know their time. But the St. Paul League of Women Voters does so much work to help our community with civic engagement. It's, I believe, hosting several candidates debates in the several different elections that are coming up on November 5th. So we're very privileged to have Sig here and the League of Women Voters. After our session, which will end at 8:30, I hope the candidates will be able to stay a little bit, because it's not a debate. And then people can go up and talk with them personally about issues, things you may have heard that you want more clarification about, or you have some point of disagreement, maybe. So if you can stay 15, 20 minutes afterwards, it would be really helpful. So now I want to introduce our candidates for St. Paul Board of Education. Directly on my left is Greg Copeland. Greg is a St. Paul East Sider from the 6th ward. Greg is a public administration consultant, works with cities in the area, has worked with the city of Maplewood. And those of you who go to St. Paul Neighborhood Network channels all the time know that Greg has his own television show on SPNN. I realize not a lot of people go to local access television, but I highly recommend just checking it out. John Broderick has spent many years in St. Paul as a teacher and as a coach, and in later life, starting in 2010, he was elected to the St. Paul School Board. So John is an incumbent. And next to John is Terrence Bouchard, also a St. Paul resident, a graduate of Creighton Senior High School, if I remember correctly, and the University of Minnesota Business School. And I want to get a clear deuce: are you still the owner of your own printing company, Terrence?
After fashion.
Okay, just that. But he has a printing company, because my dad was in the printing business, and there were sometimes problems that caused him to go out late at night to fix up things, and we weren't sure. You can be here, just glad to know your things are going great. And then Chua Wu is a refugee immigrant who came to Minnesota and graduated from St. Paul College, and then went on and got his law degree from William Mitchell Law School. And in 2008, started the, is it the lawyer? Let me see here, I got to get this right. Yeah, the United Legal Law Firm that you helped to found. And Chua is also an East Sider, and has been an activist on the East Side since he has been here. And then finally, Jean O'Connell, St. Paul resident, graduate of Central High School, graduate of the University of Minnesota Blue, heading out to be a teacher, a math teacher. We need more math teachers. Didn't quite work out that way, there weren't the jobs there. And 3M made an offer she couldn't refuse. And 34 years later, she retired from 3M and joined the school board, also in 2010, if I remember correctly. And now serves as the Chair of the St. Paul Board of Education. Is that enough? Does anybody want to add anything that I missed? Okay, well, we'll begin. First question, and I think what I will do, I'm going to actually do it different. I'm going to start with Jean first, and then we'll just sort of go back. We've got four questions, and we'll go both ways here on this. So Jean, how do you understand the achievement gap? And now you've got four minutes.
Well, I think, you know, we talk a lot about the achievement gap, and we don't always define it. So I thought I'd start out by just saying, what is it that we mean when we talk about the achievement gap, just in terms of the number itself? And so it is the gap between the proficiency scores of our highest-performing group of kids, who happen to be Caucasian or white kids in St. Paul Public Schools, and the lowest-performing kids, student group, who are African-American in St. Paul Public Schools, as measured by our state tests, which are called the MCA, is otherwise known as the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment Test. Those tests are given in grades three, five, and eight for reading and math, and in grades five and eight for science. And the gap in St. Paul Public Schools is 45% to 47%, depending on the subject, which is horrific. So if 70% of our white students are proficient, then 30... 25% of our African-American students are proficient in math, as an example. And that is, there are issues with tests, there, we know about test bias, we know a lot of things, but test bias doesn't come close to covering that gap. And so we have a perfectly designed system for educating white kids in our school district, and we need to fix it, so that it's a perfectly calibrated system for all kids. And that is the work that we're trying to do right now in St. Paul Public Schools. How we understand it, or how I understand it, or I've come to understand it, is that we need to study the data. And that is not to say that by studying the data, we're going to ignore the problem. It's about studying the data so that we can fix the problem. And we listen to our teachers who are working in personalized learning communities, which is where third-grade teachers in a school get together, and they look at whose kids are doing better in what subjects. And they learn from each other how to teach a subject better. They look at giving common tests, so that they can see which concepts have been understood by all the kids and which ones aren't, and perhaps look at which teacher teaches a particular subject better, and then taking that material and trying to use it in all classrooms in the future. So it's slow work, it's methodical work. But what we're trying to do is look at the results, school by school, see where great gains are being made, grade by grade, and figure out ways, then through administration, to take what works and have that disseminated to other teachers in other buildings and try to replicate that. So one of the ways that the school board does that is we hold the administration accountable. We have things that lots of organizations call dashboards, we call them vision cards. Our vision is that 75% of kids, all kids in St. Paul Schools, will be proficient in all subjects. We are nowhere close to that right now, but we are not moving that target. So that's how I understand the gap. It sounds a lot like numbers, but it is really about each and every one of our kids making sure that we have a successful community in the future.
Chua?
I just want to clarify something that Grant said earlier. I actually got to this country in Dallas, Texas, moved to Oklahoma, and then Wisconsin, and then up here. So traveled a lot in my younger years, in my adult life. It's been up here all this time, so. My understanding of the achievement gap, you know, I think Jean kind of stole my opening. I was just going to define it, you know. Basically, my understanding is really, it's a measurement of, you know, some of our other groups versus one of our, some of our, who is doing well, and our white kids, students that are doing really well. So I'm not going to, that thing Jean did a really good job, so I'm not going to repeat what she said. But, you know, the gap, it's something that, you know, how I understand it is that it is something that has been plaguing the nation for a long time. You know, and I have to admit that it's something that I didn't particularly pay attention to in the past. You know, it's only in the last several years, in my involvement with the Monmonk and Partnership after the 2010 census came out, that I realized how bad it was. And before that, I didn't, to be honest, I thought that school was doing really well, you know, because Minnesota has been doing really well. My understanding has been limited to, you know, just what's on the internet, what's on the school website, but what caused the, you know, gap? And my sense of what caused the gap is that, you know, it has to do with poverty. It has to do with, I guess some people say race, because it does form the racial boundaries. You know, it does have to do with how our parents', you know, educations, you know, funding, you know, that stuff. But I think, you know, some of my personal experience is that expectation of yourself, your parents' expectation of you, the students' expectation of themselves. You know, Jean and I met a student last night, and he said, you know what? He went to Central, he said, "Well, there are some students that is not ready to go to college." And Jean thankfully challenged him. And so, I mean, there are expectations that they had of themselves that are barriers to succeeding. We, you know, so my understanding of that gap is, has been, you know, that we could do more. It's something that has plagued us for a long time. I think, you know, in my understanding, it's also that there has been experts in places, in schools, that has closed the gap, and that if we put a mind in hard work, that we can do it. And that's my understanding.
Thank you, Chua. Terrence?
Hello. I have personal experience with an achievement gap, totally not a racial one. I graduated Creighton in 1967, and I believe of the valid dictorian was first in the class, I believe of 288, I believe my class ranking was 240. There's a variety of reasons why.
So, Terrence, I'm hearing that people can't hear you, so you might want to put that closer to your mouth.
There are noisy fans out here. Say. Want me to start over? All right, there's a variety of reasons why I experienced an achievement gap. And they're all so compelling. But the good news is, again, you overcome. I went from Creighton to the University of Minnesota, could only get allowed into the General College. And I performed poorly there for a few years. And as time went by, I figured, well, I wasn't disciplined enough to both study and work. And my grades were going to be a problem in my long-term goals. Poorly defined isn't work. So I quit for a while, and I found myself about 24 years old, wandering aimlessly throughout this life. A frightening experience, I might add. And I made a determination that clearly I did not know enough about the world in which I was living, and I was paying every price for it. I was determined that I would go back to the University of Minnesota and study business. And I did such a thing, and a security job as a parking lot attendant 30 days prior to my 25th birthday. And that's a good job to have if you're going to school, because once the parking lot's full, you study. And I was motivated to study, a lot fearfully, my wife. And I think motivation, or a lack of motivation, is a major cause, again, I think of this, is a major cause of the achievement gap. I started, when I started at Creighton, I really couldn't have cared less about the courses that I was studying. And I'm sure that the situation was the same, all across schools, public, private, and all across the country. They couldn't give me a reason why I needed to study biology, and I couldn't figure it out myself. My parents couldn't figure it out. By the way, I come from a fairly good stock. I do have a brother that has a PhD in math, by the way. And so I know that there's enough. Not my grade works well enough, but it's, I guess, I'll just say, it's a question of motivation, and direction, and purpose. And I think somehow, schools have to find a way to motivate these fields. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. John?
Thank you, my name is John Broderick. I actually took this first question and decided to answer just literally and simply, and reserve my analysis for a further discussion for the second question. So my answer to this question is quite simple. Across the country, students of lower economic status, and particularly those of color, are lagging behind, and many times are being underserved in many of our public schools. And it is moral and economic, I think sometimes you forget, economic future of our country is based on the success of our young people. And so I think we have a moral and economic imperative to eliminate this gap. As I said, through the government of the country, through the government of our city. And like I said, I just simply answered, is it what you're understanding of the gap?
Okay.
That's what it is.
Great.
I think it's pretty simple. We've got a problem.
Thank you, John.
Well, I guess I'm going to differ from John, in that I don't think it's simple, but indeed, we do have a problem. I'm coming at this from a background as a fellow that had the opportunity to work as the Community Action Program Administrator in the rural community of Florida back in the 1970s. Chua came to our country from a warm climate in 1902, in the state of Florida. And I've been here since 1992, living over on the East Side. And I live in a neighborhood that represents the diversity of our school system. I live in a neighborhood where the majority of my neighbors are not the same color that I am. I live in a neighborhood where all the children in my neighborhood just about get to go to different schools. The common denominator that I see, living in one of the poorest zip codes in the city of St. Paul, and with my background in dealing with poverty, is that this is a problem of poverty. This is not a racial problem. There are those who wish to make it a racial problem. And I'd like to give you some numbers. And I won't give you the same numbers that the others gave you. This is what the school system hands out to illustrate poverty. Oh, excuse me, the achievement gap. I'm calling it poverty, they're measuring it as the difference in scores on the MCA. That's not where I'm going. I did a little analysis of the population of our city, and I looked at the latest community survey by the Census Bureau of Poverty in our city. And when you, and I'm not going to bore you with the percentages, I'm going to look at the raw numbers. Who's poor in St. Paul? Well, about 20,000, 19,572 people, by my math, are white and poor in St. Paul. About 19,812 people are black and poor in St. Paul. About 9,099 are members of various groups that say they're Hispanic, by their own definition. You get to say what you are when you answer the American Community Survey questionnaire. And in the Asian community, there are 13,695. Now, of course, I'll tell you, the math was not my best subject at school. But I'm just taking the calculation of their estimate of our population, which is 290,000 people, and I'm breaking it down by numbers. Because I think it's important to note that the numbers are not exactly the same numbers that we see with regard to school attendance. Did you know? And those of you that are parents certainly do, but those of you who may be watching this program later, or are not in daily contact with the schools, that 76% of the children in our schools are of color. Did you know that 73% of those children who attend our schools, white or of color, get free or reduced lunch? I think that tells us that this is a problem of poverty. I've got a minute left. I'm not going to go into solving the problem at this point, but I'm going to say that there's another indicator of our problem besides the test scores. I think a major indicator that we have to turn around, and when you look at the new federal measurements under the waiver that Minnesota got, you may remember that we are not under the same rules that we used to be under. We're going to be measured on how we do with graduation rates. Are our children in the schools graduating? The current results are that 64% are getting high school diplomas. That means, if my math wasn't good, about 36% are not. That has improved by seven points in seven years, you know, excuse me, in four years. That is not sufficient. Do you know it's going to take 20 and a half years to eliminate that 36% who are not getting diplomas if we keep doing this at the current rate? My time's up, we'll talk more about that next time. Do you need it?
I think I'm okay. Would anybody like to take one minute to add anything they didn't already say on this question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Terrence.
I'm the eighth out of nine children. I didn't realize there were families that were poorer than we were until maybe I was 18 years old. I thought everybody was richer than we were. I don't believe it's a question of poverty. That's all.
Okay, I think this time we'll go, we'll start with Greg, and we'll go toward Jean. And now, Greg, you'll be able to follow up immediately on what do you think needs to be done to end the achievement gap in St. Paul Public Schools?
Well, and I gave you an indicator of where I think we need to go, and the mountain that we have to climb. Because when your current graduation rate is at 64%, and you are going to be measured, we are going to be measured, this school system is going to be measured, by the federal government, along with other indices, by our graduation rate. When we are proceeding at an improvement of 1.75 points of improvement in each year over the last four years, and you're at only 64% success here, which means a diploma in hand, we are a long way from winning the battle. It seems to me that we have nothing to gain by blaming race. We have nothing to gain by blaming anyone. It seems to me that we don't need to blame anyone, what we need to do is take action. And that action, it seems to me, probably needs to be a little different than it is in other places. Because I've heard the other folks talk about the nation. Well, I'm concerned about the nation, but you know what? I'm running for the St. Paul School Board. So what do we need to do here? I think our challenge is to take responsibility for the future of the children that come in the front door. And unless we're willing to do that to start with, then you know what? We're going to have this problem to kick around and admire, like we've had it for the last 20 years. And St. Paul, frankly, is ahead of the game in some respects. In some states, I want to give you that low comparison, they don't have the funding that we do to provide education to folks that are at the youngest ages in our community, preschool ages. We have that. I think we should support more of that. When this last referendum came around, I told various members in the school board that I certainly would support the money, that I would support the levy for continuing that part of the program. I did not support the $9 million technology levy, because folks, it was very clear to me that there was no real specific plan. What there was, was gee, let's go out and get $9 million so we can figure out how to do the repairs on our buildings, the improvements to our existing computer systems that we're not making it. That there had been really no technological advance in the system, and that this was looking to make up for lost time. Frankly, I think we've seen where the school system is still, figuring out ways to spend money. So I think that technology, actually, if you look at it, students bring technology with them to school today. People talk about, and the superintendent said during the last levy of campaign, you know, I don't want to provide the students with a tablet, I don't want to provide the students with a computer. Well, a lot of students walk in the door with their own, but there's a large group of kids that don't. And they're the poor kids. You don't need any kind of great study to figure out that the technology barrier that's going to exist is going to exacerbate what's going on in our schools. I think we got to create some incentive programs for our students to win those technological pieces, because they want those iPads, or smartphones, or these things that frankly could be a value, because this is the way the future's going. The superintendent likes to talk about, we got to talk about the kids we have, not the ones we had. Well, you know, I graduated from high school in 1972, so I'm not trying to recreate 1972, because it's 2013. to recreate nineteen seventy-two because it's 2013, folks, and we need to adjust our thinking. And I'm a conservative guy here on the panel. I don't want to spend every dime in every citizen's pocket on this stuff. I think we've got the money. We know we need to do it. We just have to get the political will to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. During a large part of the 20th century in public education, the operative question was, is Johnny ready for school? Well, that was a rather rigid sense of placement, a rigid definition of what to do for students. And I think we have rightfully, oh, do I need to?
Yes.
I think we have, I thought I was so loud, I was trying to spare people my old hot approach of voice. I think we rightfully switched our perspective, and I saw this happening as I was a teacher. I taught between the years of nineteen sixty-six and the year 2000. And I saw during that time, a change to really being concerned about are our schools ready for Johnny? And I think what we really need today is maybe go back to the drawing board and meld those two concepts. Let's really talk, let's really talk in terms of an understanding between Johnny, or Jeanie, or Omar, or whoever, and his family and the school in terms of shared responsibility, and agreed upon expectations. The district must absolutely respect every student and every family that comes through our doors, regardless of race, creed, color, or economic status. When I look at a parent at a conference, and I happen to be looking across the table at someone who may be an attorney in law in downtown St. Paul, I can show if no more added respect than I can if I'm looking across the table at a neighbor of mine who lives in lockdown, who's currently unemployed. And I think that's what we need to understand, that we have to have a communication between all of the people who send their children to our schools, and the people that are running these schools. So I think we need a mutual sense of respect, and we do have to have students understand that while we are conscious of cultural differences, and while we are sensitive to challenges that kids bring to us, and that their families have at home and in their communities, we also must have a respect for what I call the schoolhouse culture. Students in our schools must feel welcome, and must feel safe, and they must feel confident in order to learn. And in order to do that, I think we have to develop that mutual respect. And I think as when we do that, we will come a long way in terms of eliminating an achievement gap, which sometimes is caused by either misunderstanding on the part of families, or misunderstanding on the part of the educators. We often talk about not having to blame game. Unfortunately, I myself have fallen into the trap, as a teacher, of blaming the parents. And the parents oftentimes have blamed the teachers. And sometimes the kids have blamed everybody. But you know what? What we need to do is work together on this thing. And that's my simple solution to the achievement gap, is that we're all in this board together. And as I said before, it's not, I shouldn't have said simple. You're right, Coleman, it's complicated, but it's real. And we got to work at it, and we have to have honest, courageous conversations about poverty. That's what we're doing today. Thank you.
Thanks, Coach. Terrence?
It seems to me that if you want a kid to learn something, you need to motivate him to learn. The kid needs to know why he has studied what he is asked to study. I say again, the gap in my achievement piece of feed, Creighton High School, and my early experience at university was, I really had no idea why I would study these things. And it's hard to motivate me, I would think, other people also, if they don't know why they're studying what they're studying. So I think explaining, I'll just give you a little, little one here. At the University of Minnesota, I wasn't a very good student, but I got to be a good student towards the end. I'm coming up on a class, quantitative analysis, Q81050. Okay, here we go. And first thing you go, you go to the class, the class the teacher tells you. Read these first two chapters, it'll tell you a lot about why you might want to study quantitative analysis. I'd done that before, and it didn't really frighten anything that would motivate me in other courses, but it explained to me, wow, here's the reason why you might want to study quantitative analysis. Communication is easy, in the sense that we all know one or more of the world's languages. However, despite a great amount of redundancy, there is a high probability of ambiguity and misinterpretation in any communication process. You might want to study quantitative analysis if you, if you want to communicate with someone quantitatively. And study quantitative analysis is a study of the agreement of the definition of the terms used in the subject. I'll say again, you can close the achievement gap, I believe, by explaining why these kids should study whatever they're studying. Thank you.
Thank you. I will begin by saying that I agree with my panelists here that, no, I think the first thing we need to do is we need to stop pointing fingers. And we need everyone at the table to resolve this problem, to solve this problem. So, you know, we, first thing is, nobody's to blame here. We got to start to come to the table and see what we can do to solve the problem. The other thing that we need to do, or that I understand, is that the achievement gap is not just one, one thing that you resolve and then the problem is solved. It's a combination of things, working together, and it's a complex things, social, economic factor that, that it's working all together at the same time to challenge our kids, our families. We have to recognize that. I think that the school has done, has started the policy, you know, the strong school, strong community. I think they have taken open, studies of open schools that worked, and then tried to implement that, to try to combat the achievement gap, and with the racial equity policy, to try to narrow that gap. And I think we are heading in the right direction. I can give you some of my personal experience, in terms of what worked for me. What worked for me is, you know, when I got to this country, the teachers, you know, in the South, they didn't really know what to do with us, so they had to actually come up with somebody to come help us, or they had aides to come help us, to try to catch up. And this is, so providing extra help for students who fall behind. I understand that a lot of our kids, you know, when they get to high school, they're like three or four years, five years behind. And I was like five, six years behind when I started school, and I was able to catch up with extra helps. The curriculum, and it needs to be challenging, you know. I know that, you know, my, I was put in some of the classes I needed, you know, to really do well. You know, I understand that some of my peers, when we first got to this country, for example, you know, when I moved to Wisconsin, they, we have ESL programs. I know it's a great way to help our kids, and to do, adjust and to learn. But I think we have become complacent at those times, and some of our kids were actually not challenged enough, and are falling behind, not prepared for college. I think we have to make sure we always challenge our kids, empower our parents to get involved, empower our teachers to be partners, to foster the love of teaching, you know? Because a teacher, I think, in my experience, a lot of the teachers made a lot of difference in how I, you know, view education, and how I, you know, was able to encourage me to do well. I think some of the things that we need to do is, you know, definitely, we talked about poverty. That is definitely not, not the main problem for our achievement gap, but it certainly is a major obstacle in our kids achieving in school. So we need to combat that. We need to work with our elected officials. For example, Mayor Chris Coleman has on his agenda, as the main agenda, his thing to end the achievement gap. And I think poverty will be something that we can work with our elected officials and partners, and to try to create jobs and end poverty.
So I'm going to reiterate that, from my perspective, the causes of the achievement gap are inequities in our society. So while poverty play is a big part of that, it is absolutely clear from the data for St. Paul public schools, that race trumps poverty, unfortunately. And we need to recognize that, and we need to be willing to talk about it as a community, and make, do things differently. And what those things are, are not abundantly clear, because we have to talk about them together, and we need to create, we need to try different things and see what works. There isn't a silver bullet in any community in the United States that we can just grab onto and say, this is going to fix our issue. But we, I am convinced, in this community, can create that together. And so while there's data nationally that says it's all about poverty, the data in St. Paul says it's about race, and poverty is pretty prevalent in most of our racial communities, but it is not limited to our racial communities. Technology and other resource access is a huge issue, but in, in the Twin Cities, all of the studies say that we have an academic achievement gap racially, we have healthcare gaps, we have housing gaps, we have transportation gaps, and we have employment gaps. And the school district can work on pieces of that, but the entire community has to work on all of it, so that these things work together. And that's a big effort. And I think this community is up to it. I think this community is ready for it. And that is the reason why I support the racial equity training that is going on in the St. Paul public schools, and is moving into the city, and is moving into the community. And this training is about actually allowing and encouraging conversations about how race matters, and how it affects the way we do things, and looking at our processes, and looking at the data to say, stop putting your gun in the sand. Let's really look at this. Because if kids are, are put into special ed because they're misbehaving at a much higher rate because they happen to be African-American boys, we need to address that. We absolutely need to address that. And that is what our data tells us. And our data tells us that we suspend African-American kids at a much higher rate, whether that's from buses, whether that is from schools, and if kids aren't in school, they can't learn. So we've got to fix this, and we've got to figure out ways to do it together. And we, we're going to make some missteps along the way, but we need our entire organization and our entire city to help us do that. And so I am, for one, committed to continuing that effort, and making it go faster, and just help our kids in any way possible. This is, I agree with, with a number of our other folks here, this is critical for our city. We cannot afford to have our kids not successful in school, because that's going to affect their lives forever, and the demographics of this city are fundamentally changing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. I think, because I'm worried about time, if there's time at the end, I'll give people a chance to say more. But I would like you to move on to the next question. I'm sure all of you here who are running for the school board know that in July, the St. Paul Board of Education approved the district's racial equity policy. So based on your reading of that and your understanding of it, how do you think that's going to affect the efforts in St. Paul public schools to end the achievement gap? And Jean, if you would start?
Or, did you want to start with?
Nope.
Nope. All right.
Make it really simple.
Okay. So the policy is fairly straightforward, and I think what I wanted to do was read the last line of the purpose statement for the racial equity policy. And it says that St. Paul public schools must address and overcome the inequity that we see in our city and the institutional racism by providing all students with the support and opportunity to succeed. So number one, we're recognizing that it exists, which is really important for our parents and our students to hear, that we're not hiding from it. And there's a number of points to the policy, but it, but it really says that we're going to find out where those disparities exist. We're going to, we're going to look at the processes and the things that we do as a school district, and we're going to try as best we can to eliminate those disparities. And that's everything from how do we handle, you know, one of the things we've done as a school district is every kid who comes into the school building, regardless of income, is offered a free breakfast every morning, because we know breakfast is so critical to success of kids. And one of the reasons we did that was to make sure that no child doesn't have breakfast because they feel bad about going into that line because their friends know that they don't have the money to pay for breakfast. Those are simple things. There's expense associated with it, but we need to make sure that our kids are not every minute of every day being told, you're different, and, and whatever difference that is, it's bad. We've changed the, the name of our English language learning department to the multilingual support group. And that may sound really corny, but the reality is, is that we have kids who are bilingual three years after they start St. Paul public schools, or five years after they start St. Paul public schools. And we have white kids who don't have that bilingualism five years into their education in St. Paul public schools. And we should be celebrating that, rather than looking at it as a deficit. So our policy is here to allow our employees to feel comfortable in doing the work we're asking them to do, and to go out on a limb and, and know that it's okay to have conversations that don't end, because they're not going to end in that, we're not going to come up with the best solution, we're not going to come up with the answer in the first go-around. But if we don't continue to hold the conversations, we're never going to get there. And so that's why I'm really proud that we have actually passed and created a racial equity policy, which took us a while as a board, and we had a lot of conversation about this. But it's, it's about saying that this is who we are in St. Paul public schools, this is what our parents can expect from us, and this is what our kids should expect from us. And if we have those expectations out there, the adults in the system will likely change.
You know, my understanding of the racial equity policy, my reading of it, and my discussion with other people, is that it is to ensure that our staff, our administrative teachers, are not barriers to our kids' learning. And I think, you know, that does definitely help. You know, what Jean said, that race in our district actually trumps other things, poverty and everything else, that is definitely a troubling thing, and I think for us to recognize that we have a very diverse community- we have a very diverse community, diverse race, culture, we need to understand the landscape, what people are coming from, what background, what socioeconomic background, you know, as a scientist myself, you know, when you study something, you gotta understand your subject. And I think teachers, administrators, this racial equity policy, you know, if all, one of the tasks is to understand, you know, our students better, our parents, where they're coming from, in a sense, to care, I think that that does help a lot. It certainly is not the solution, the sole solution to our economic achievement problem, but it will help us get there.
I don't know anything about it.
Thank you. The racial equity policy was passed on July 16th, 2013. If you always remember that date, happens to be my late wife's birthday, so I'll never forget the exact date, but it was a momentous occasion. That policy was voted, the adoption of the policy came about on a six to one vote. And I was the one person who voted against adoption of the racial equity policy. However, I've had the opportunity to make it clear to a lot of people that I've talked to since then, and actually in an interview with the Minnesota Spokesman Recorder, that my vote against the adoption of the racial equity policy was absolutely not a vote against racial equity, and it was absolutely not an indication that I am not fully aware of the terribleness of institutional racism that exists in our country and unfortunately exists in our very community. But my vote that night was to delay not to cancel the adoption, because I think at that point in time, I had some legitimate concerns about the language and what I did not understand in terms of subsequent implementation of the policy. However, that vote was taken, I announced very rapidly, that when a vote was taken in the St. Paul School Board, I supported that action. And I will continue to support racial equity efforts in the St. Paul Public Schools. However, I must say that I still have some reservations about the language of the policy, because I don't wanna have a policy that's just pixie dust. I wanna have a policy that actually goes after what we're trying to go after. And I also want to be assured that we are monitoring the implementation as it goes along, and that versus one of our responsibilities as a board member. But I think I needed to clarify that, and I haven't already done so, and I'm doing it again tonight. Thank you. This policy, this racial equity training policy, I can tell you a few things about it. I can tell you that the board has spent one point, two million dollars on this. I can tell you a little consultant, California is very glad that you adopted this policy. But I think we can do better. I think what we need are teachers that have aides in the classroom to actually do the work that we are sending children to school to do, and that is to learn. The public school system is not there to educate the folks that have BAs, BSs, master's degrees, PhDs, on how to treat people with respect, how to treat our children who are of color any differently than we treat our children who are white. We should demand of all employees in the school system and all the volunteers in the school system, and there are many, that they treat our children with respect, and we shouldn't have to send them back to school at taxpayer expense to figure that out. We are misusing precious resources when we do this. I find it strange that we have to have courageous conversations. I find it shocking that the school board chair says that we have to have courageous conversations when it is this very school board that shut down the negotiations with the teachers, walked away from the bargaining table, walked away from the table in an election year. How convenient, how convenient. We have teachers organization in this city that represents over 3,000 teachers. They were making some very bold points about the problems that they face every day in our classrooms. And instead of embracing that conversation, and folks, that was a courageous conversation to have, what do they do? They walk away from the bargaining table in the middle of an election. To put the talks behind closed doors at a state agency, you know, folks, that is not how things get done. I agree with the chair that you have to get to talking with people, that you have to build relationships with people. She says, we're never gonna get there if we don't have these courageous conversations. There's a lot of things we need to have courageous conversations about the St. Paul Schools. And frankly, I think we need some courageous counselors to develop some courageous educational plans for children, for individual children, not to treat children as members of some group. You're poor, you're white, you're black, you're Asian, you're Hispanic, no, you're a child that wants to make something of their life. And frankly, folks, that takes some planning. And when you're starting behind the curve, when you may come from a family situation, where you're in a single-family parent home, that takes extra work. When you're working a job that doesn't pay the bills, that takes a lot more work. And we have money that we're wasting on consultant in California, millions of dollars that this board, over a five-year period, go to the website, I can't make this up, they have a five-year plan for racial equity. They hired a bunch of nice folks. I wanna, you know, I wanna turn these people into counselors to deal with our children and their parents, to engage our parents. And this board supposedly places a premium on that. They brag on the website that there are 5,700 parents that are involved in citizen advisory committees and boards. Well, you know what, I've been a member of a lot of wards and a lot of commissions, and it's good to be involved. But you know what, it's better to be involved in working to develop an education plan for your child that you can back up at home. So that's what I think we ought to be doing instead of having racial equity training.
It's yours.
Oh, it's mine?
No. Of course, if, not everybody will be elected, but the question is, what is the school board's responsibility for ending the achievement gap in the St. Paul Public Schools? What can you do as a board member, as a board, to end that?
Well, thank you. And that's my goal, is not to set a goal that is unreasonable, but to set a goal that is just and right, because it is part of what parents, taxpayers, and our faculty that come to school expect. They're not coming there to achieve 75%. Are we already writing off 25% of our students? This is not the way that we do things in America. Let me, well, it's not the way I think we should do things in America, all right. In the classroom, that's where education takes place, not at the board meeting, not in the seminars on racial equity training, not in the break room, and you know what, that's where we ought to spend our money. And this budget by this board does not spend the money in the classroom. Only 47% of the general fund, that portion of the budget which provides the educational dollars to pay your teachers, is allocated directly to the schools. Last year it was 48%. I think we ought to be spending certainly the majority of our money and targeting it in the schools. Don't tell me members of the board that, Brent, you just don't understand. We're spending money on district-wide support, $89 million. We're spending money on school services support, $179 million next year. And by the way, we only spend 1% on administration. Now, of course, if you believe that, they have a bridge or two that they'll sell you. I do not buy it. Folks, we should be spending our money on teacher salaries, we shouldn't be having a board meeting where we promote every administrator to a new job like we had last Tuesday. That is not going to solve any problem. You know what the problem is that needs to be solved? It's for those children that need that diploma. That's our mission, that's our mission, it's real simple. It's hard to get there, but we know what it is. We all know what it is, because probably most of you, I hope all of you in this room, have a high school diploma. If you're gonna get a job, if you're gonna get a vocational training, if you're gonna get onto college, if you're gonna be a scientist, or a lawyer, or a coach, or a businessman, or a 3M executive, you have to get a little bit more than a high school diploma. And folks, if you don't get that, you're not gonna get to any of the jobs that the people here have had in their lives. We need to change the dynamics here. We need parents who are demanding a seat at the table. We need to get our parents excited about their children's future. And some of you may say in the middle of class on the way, well, they ought to be excited because they're their kids. But you know, having been raised in a single-family home, a single-parent home, you know, it's not always easy. When your mother waited on tables, you know, and got dimes for gifts back in the seventies or the sixties or something, she did the best she could, she drove them a school bus in the morning and the afternoon, and I appreciate what she did for them. And everybody's got a mother I hope that'll work hard for them, and for those that haven't had that opportunity yet to engage, because they're so busy trying to just survive in a system where the costs today are so much more, we need to provide them some help. And we have a huge social service system in Ramsey County. Why aren't we engaging that expensive, costly, large system at our schools? We should have partners in all of these things. Thank you. And you vote Republican, I appreciate it. Thank you, Greg. In my first campaign for school board, it actually was in 2001.
2001?
I said that the most important interaction in education is that between the teacher and the learner and the classroom. And I think what this school board has or needs to do, and has to have, has the, that part of their brain that is operating every time we make a decision, is that we need, as a school board and as a community, to decide together with many of our diverse communities and the broader community, what that interaction should actually be like. And I think when we define that interaction in terms of love, respect, discipline, I'm not afraid to use that word, discipline, and authentic relationships, we will go a long way in terms of educating all of our students, and particularly doing a better job of educating the kids that right now are suffering from this achievement gap. We must have individual teachers who believe that all, and I mean believe, that all of their students can learn, all. And we must have families who support their students, so their students not only come to school regularly, but come to school ready and willing to learn. And what this calls for is a mutual agreement of what the expectations and responsibilities of the educators, which I was, once was, and the parents, which I guess you never stop being, and, most importantly, the students. We educators must have a respect for the culture and the socioeconomic backgrounds of all of our students all over this city. And they in turn must have a respect for the schoolhouse culture that I have been personally a part of my entire life. And that's a place where students can learn, teachers can teach, and all families feel welcome at the door. That's my simple solution for trying to do what's best for all the kids in St. Paul. I wish I'd been more successful when I was in the classroom, when I wasn't as smart then as I am now. Thank you.
Wow. I file for school board because I believe the system, the school system here in St. Paul and all across the country is miserably failing to teach these kids, especially in high school, what they need to know to face the world if that they are going to face. I mentioned something about biology, I studied biology for a year, I could have studied biology for a week, you know, and all I needed to know about biology. If they don't teach kids jobs and opportunity, a program for some kind of personal and professional growth, they failed it. If they don't teach them how to make decisions, if they don't teach them what a decision is, they failed it. And they fail here, they fail everywhere. I have in mind a course, which I'm currently calling The Meaning and Importance of Financially Accountable Politics, and I know that's a subject, but that's probably why I had an achievement gap, I didn't follow the rules very well. So I'm gonna break the rule again. If you're like me to the school board, I will develop at little or no cost to the taxpayer, a 10-hour course for seniors, which I am currently calling The Meaning and Importance of Financially Accountable Politics. I want to develop this course, because I believe high school seniors need to know that politics is, among other things, the other things tend to divert our attention and divide us, but among other things, it is an ongoing process through which financial advantages and disadvantages are distributed throughout society. I believe seniors need to know that politicians have distributed some serious financial disadvantages to them in the form of their share of the national debt, currently at $53,500 per student, and in the form of unfunded federal entitlement liabilities. I believe they need to know that these financial disadvantages are real, and they are going to have pressing influence on their financial, on their students' financial future. I believe they need to know that the only reason politicians don't have to explain to them why they should be happy to accept these financial disadvantages is because they are not organized for the purpose of insisting they do so. And I finally, I believe that if seniors are taught why they might want to organize for the purpose of directly questioning the elected officials, especially US senators and representatives, about the financial disadvantages they are distributing to our youth, they just might do it. At least they would know they have a choice. And the course I'm gonna say could easily be incorporated into a current events or civics class, and I could have that course ready for this year's seniors. This plan differentiates me from these fine people on board and on your board. Thank you. Thank you.
The, our vision in school is to make sure that every kid, every student, has the opportunity to succeed. And if the gap is as big as it is today, then we collectively fail our students. So I definitely, it is the board's responsibility to make sure that we close this gap, to answer the question. We have to, as a board member, we have to be more proactive. And I know that the board, the current board, are trying to do that in what I read, what I see, by setting this strong school, strong community, strategic plan, by coming up with this racial equity policy to try to address some of the concerns, issues that they see. So I think we, they are trying to be more proactive, and that's what we could do as a board member, is to try to be more proactive, knowing that we fail, and that we need to attack this problem. So our policies need to target this problem, needs to address it head-on. We also, as a board member, will have to allocate resources directly to combat these problems. You know, as I said earlier, some of the things I see that worked for me were, you know, making sure that there are extra help of kids like myself that need to help, kids, African-American kids, for example, that fall behind, well, make sure that they don't fall behind in the first place, but when they do fall behind already, we need to give them extra help. And we can do that, the board can do that by allocating resources to make sure that these problem areas are addressed. A board member needs to also stay connected to the community. We have to understand our community, their issues, their concerns, their, and so that we can adequately set policies and, you know, and to help what the needs of the community, go to the community, so that you understand that. And so I think that it's something that a board member could do, that's something I plan to do. Need to work with our officials. This is, like I said earlier, not a one, or two, or three problem, it's multiple, multifaceted problem that is challenging to us, that's been plaguing us for a long, long time. So we got to work with everyone, not just the school personnel, but the cities, the state, the federal, try to address this problem as a community. I think as a board member, we could also try to advocate for money to, from state and federal agencies, to make sure that these problem areas are addressed.
Thank you, Jim. So what's the role of the board? You know, fundamentally, the board is about policy, it's about oversight, and it's about making sure that the budget reflects the priorities. And so, we know, we have a huge amount of data that says early childhood and family education, and our pre-teen programs get kids ready for kindergarten. And we know that the achievement gap starts there. So as we go forward, and we have more state money coming, not this year, but next year, to support all the kindergarten across the state, we have opportunities in our budgeting to really focus more dollars and more access to the neediest members of our community. And it's one thing to create the spaces, but it's another thing to make sure that parents understand why it's so important for their kids to be there early. And we need to do a better job of that as we go forward, but I would absolutely support money going that direction to make sure that our kids start school on a better footing than they do today. The board has to support the racial equity work that's being done in the school district. This is critically important conversation, but more important, critically important change that we need to make in order to change the results. If we continue to do the same things, we're going to get the same results. And the same results are racially predictable achievement. And it's not positive racially predictable achievement for student groups, whether those student groups are Asian, whether they're Latino, whether they're African-American or American Indian. And that is not something that can continue in this city. We have, we have got to figure out a way to make this wonderfully predictable performance of white children become wonderfully predictable performance for all children. We've got great teachers, this is not about blaming people, this is about all of us doing a lot of soul-searching about what it is that we do every day, and how we look at people. And instead of saying, "I'm colorblind," is to be realistic. We are not colorblind. Well, maybe a few of us are, but I'm not. I know there's a, you know, there's a medical issue around colorblindness, but when we talk about colorblindness in society, we say, you know, "It doesn't matter that you're African-American, and it doesn't matter that you're Hmong, and it doesn't matter that your skin is darker." But we know it does. If we listen to you at all, we know that, that all kinds of things in our society are different for you. And we need to make sure that we are aware of that as we, as we work in our schools, and try desperately to change that in our school environment, so that our kids have a much safer place to be. And that will make it better for everybody. It'll make it better for all of our students to grow up in that environment, and to learn how to work together with everyone, and to not have preconceived ideas about their peers because of the color of their skin. So the school board needs to work on partnerships in the community to bring all of the resources to bear to do this, because even if we do this within our buildings, which will be really tough work, we still have the overall society that we got to deal with. So we've got to work it together, and I think that's one of the things I really bring to the table, is a collaborative spirit and an ability to bring people together. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. I want to thank all of you for making the sacrifice of running to the school board. I know I have at least a dozen questions I would like to ask at this point. I'm sure you have quite a few that you would like to ask, but what I ask you to do at this point is to say those, to talk with the candidates as they remain afterwards. So first of all, don't leave yet, but I want to give these five individuals our gratitude for being here tonight and today.